Carol Chellman.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood. Linda Brulette. Rebecca Remison. Okay, so if you'll just take a moment with your own thoughts and then we'll do the play for ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So tonight's agenda is pretty much we'll have a presentation by the superintendent for the school budget and then we'll get to talk amongst ourselves. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. The goal this evening is to present you, the school board, as well as folks who may be watching this at home, an overview of how the administrative team has gone about the process of preparing a draft of the FY12 budget for your review. And I also want to say that at the outset, we'll be sharing some of the conversations we've had and how we expect to see the district move forward in the next school year as part of the budget planning. You might recall that last May and in July, as well as in mid-September, you held specific workshops where you took a look at a very, very preliminary view of the budget. You had brainstormed some ideas and ultimately directed the administration to illustrate the impact of a 0 percent A-level funded budget, which we will do this evening. Administrators compiled their budgets and after -- you can move that forward, thank you. After really two rounds of review, we're prepared to share with you our recommendations. We recognize fully that as a board, over the next four weeks, you'll be working to adopt a budget that's educationally sound and fiscally responsible, but this is our collective best thinking that we've put forward administratively for your consideration. So we certainly recognize that a budget adoption by the school board is perhaps the single most substantive duty assigned to you under state law. As board members, you must work to ensure that we have the resources to meet the district goals and recognize that the budget serves as the financial outline of the district's many fine educational programs. We believe the budget that we present to you this evening, though not ideal or optimum, does allow us to continue the good work of the district. The budget headlines before we jump in is we think we are presenting a budget that first and foremost is able to sustain all programs. We have continued to support a student-teacher ratio that permits a personalized classroom environment for each one of our students. We've taken steps in this proposed budget to support teacher development and expand learning opportunities for students through the use of intervention blocks and study skills centers. We will propose reorganizing central office and adjusting some levels of student support services as a way to meet the city council's mandate. At our three elementary schools, our enrollment projection from the New England School Development Council suggests that we will see a decline of some seventy -- excuse me, some thirty kindergarten students looking forward next year from this year. And you can see that illustrated kind of by the -- on the left-hand side, the numbers there. We're expecting from 178 to actually go down to 148 students in K, and we'll see whether or not that comes true or not. But what the long bar should suggest to you and show you is that next year, we will see what I think will be hopefully, as the data suggests, the last of that bubble that we're managing through the elementary schools. It should suggest the height of the enrollment and that we'll see a decline of that bubble we've been managing K5 over the last few years. In fact, the NSDAQ projection suggests that in the next five years, we'll go from about 1,040 pupils to roughly 940, a loss of some 100 students over the next five years. So we've worked to keep elementary classroom staffing levels at the same number of FTEs as we currently enjoy this year. The population K5 will be the same. There is some variation at a grade level or two, but the student-teacher ratios is 17 to 1 at both Dundero and New Franklin and 19 to 1 at Little Harbor School. In reviewing the budget, we spent time collectively with the principals to look at those elements that they have some control over in their budget, those discretionary items which run from school supplies, school books, periodicals, equipment replacement and such. This table gives you a sense of how each of the schools has worked to address those needs. And while there's a little bit of variation, on the whole, two of the schools are spending roughly $142 per pupil. Little Harbor, there's some economy there, I think, with school supplies, $127 per pupil on those items. And so they've worked to stay within that level of funding of their budgets. Next year, we want to build on the good work taking place with reading and math and use some of our federal funds. Our district in need of improvement and Title II funds to be able to continue to invest in our teaching staff. We're proposing two instructional coaches who will provide teacher teams the expert support in order to strengthen their professional learning teams. Across the three schools, we've agreed to some non-negotiables. As a district in need of improvement, we want to see a minimum literacy block of 110 minutes across our schools, a 60 to 75-minute math block, and the development of an intervention block of a minimum of 30 minutes. We're still working on plans to work on an after-school intervention and enrichment program, and we know we want to expand last summer's Jump Start program that we offered at each of the three schools. Enrollment in grade six to 12, the middle school and high school, will remain stable in FY12. The middle school is expected to see a decline of 11 pupils and the high school a decline of 13. The trend at the middle school, however, is a modest increase over the next four years, and the trend at the high school is to see a decline, where next year, we're projecting 1,107 students, three years from now, just under 1,000. At the middle school, we will expand the length of the school day modestly. We'll adjust the start time a little bit later and provide students longer instructional blocks. Currently, the middle school staff is examining its current math program. They're visiting successful schools, and the goal is essentially to put into place a math sequence that finds all children learning Algebra I concepts in the eighth grade. The new schedule will provide learners with an intervention enrichment block and offer an additional study skills block where warranted. The change in schedule has eliminated the need for two additional ELA positions that has been used to address literacy skills in the past. Portsmouth High School, next year faculty and staff will be engaged in the self-study process, preparing for the New England Schools and Colleges Accreditation visit for the fall of 2012. The school is looking to strengthen its study skills centers by using online software and tutorial support. The high school is looking to pilot a senior seminar process in order to create a more robust senior year for students and continue to work on expanding articulation agreements with Southern New Hampshire University as part of an early college collaboration. Looking again at the resource allocation of both schools that principals have, the middle school is expecting to purchase additional math materials in support of the change in curriculum we expect next fall. And in light of the middle school project, you'll see that they have not requested any newer replacement equipment. At the high school, we're able to push the accreditation visit off until FY13, and so those resources at $146 per pupil remain at the same level as a year ago. In terms of budget specifics, what we are proposing is a reduction of some five full-time equivalent positions from the central office system-wide budget. We propose reducing the technology director's position and the special services director's position and reassign those duties to the assistant superintendent in the case of technology and the Title I director's position in the case of special education. We also have a more detailed plan about how we'll develop building-level coordinators to support our special ed program. We propose reducing the business administrator's administrative assistant and have agreed -- Mr. Bartlett and I have agreed to share Ms. Noble's skills between my office and his. We're going to adjust the computer technician, a computer technician position. You might remember a year ago, we had actually added a position. But quite honestly, the elementary school principals where we thought we might have them all five days a week have determined that three days a week is more than efficient and effective for their needs, and so we propose readjusting that back down by one FTE. We similarly are proposing adjusting our maintenance staff by one. At the building level, we have four teaching positions that have declared their retirement in June 2011. We would replace the music and PE positions and transfer those free ELA positions from the middle school to the high school. Additionally, the high school has enjoyed an additional counselor position. You might remember a position was eliminated at the middle school last year, assigned to the school. You had agreed to use some ERA funding so that we could bring back the college counselor position, so we're suggesting reducing that counselor staffing at the high school by one FTE. We would also adjust staffing with the nurse by reducing a half position, a half full-time equivalent, adjust the psychologist staffing from 2.5 to 2, and adjust automotive CTE staffing from one full-time equivalent to .5. Really, in that particular program, there are 12 students who are engaged in both the first and second-year program of automotive. We have engaged in some conversation with Great Bay and encouraged them to come and partner with us to that end, to see if we -- they certainly want to be able to use our space, and we're talking about sharing a possible teaching position, but 12 seems to be the right level of staffing with a half-time, a full-time equivalent. I've already talked a little bit about the middle school, and then the final piece is we're suggesting an adjustment at the elementary schools with guidance and outreach support. Each of the elementary schools actually has a guidance counselor, a clinical outreach counselor, and a paraprofessional who are assigned to work with children in a support services capacity. We're prepared to adjust these more in line with the state standards, and so we would reduce a full-time equivalent at each of the three buildings. So building-level adjustments at this point would be 7.5 full-time equivalent positions. So the numbers, what we wanted to show you was what is the impact of a status quo budget? The target set, our budget this current year is $36,904,000. If we -- Steve has run the numbers. We've looked at the 2.43 percent 10-year rolling cola. We've looked at the retirement costs, et cetera, the health insurance costs. A status quo budget, which is to say, all people coming back next year in the same capacity they're in this year without any change, is $38,859,800, which means the adjustment to hit a zero target is some 1.955 million. The adjustments I've shared with you that we're proposing, the 12.5 full-time equivalents either in central office or in the building level, brings us to $37,788,675. We also have been told that for each full-time equivalent we take, the city will give us a $22,800 FTE health adjustment from the Health Stabilization Fund, and we also know that we have the last of some federal support in the 2010 Education Jobs Fund, so that's $195,000. So the sum total is some $37.3 million, which leaves a delta to hit that target of zero of some $389,000 still remaining. So we have considered a number of other possibilities in order to achieve the goal. We list the three most viable here. The first is an early retirement incentive, which we recognize is contingent upon city council approval. There are 26 teachers who in our district have 25 more years of service to the Portsmouth School Department, who, if they were willing to make an irrevocable commitment to retire in June, would receive a medical subsidy up to 50% of a two-person plan. Actually, there are only 22 employees eligible. There were 26, but of course, four have already declared their retirement. I mentioned that a little bit earlier. Two other opportunities we encourage the board is to look at the Portsmouth Early Education Program and see what opportunities might occur with moving that program to Dundero, both in terms of how we're proposing to reorganize our special education program, as well as opportunities to bring resource into one building and be more efficient. But there's also the part, what else could we do if we wanted to stay at the community campus and make some other adjustments? As I said to the board last week, we have made a request of the APT, the Association of Portsmouth Teachers, for some contribution back in terms of cost reimbursement, and I think they'll take that to a vote later this week. And of course, we're open to any and all school board suggestions in terms of achieving the city council's mandate. So in short, we approached these recommendations much the same way we did last year. We really sought to protect the instructional core, and with the exception of the automotive CTE adjustment, which we would argue was a better alignment given the level of students taking that coursework, all classroom teachers remain intact. We looked to administrative adjustments and see how we could get flatter and leaner, and we'll talk more about that later. We examined what opportunities existed through attrition, and we made adjustments with the level of student support services at -- across the three grade levels. That's not to suggest that those positions aren't valued, but the levels are beyond the 1 to 500 ratio recommended by minimum standards for guidance at the elementary level and the 1 to 300 level recommended at the secondary school. So we have before you about 1.56 million in adjustments with some 400,000 remaining. At the first public hearing, we would suggest that we workshop with the board so you have a full understanding of the impacts, the central office reorganization and system adjustments. The 25th, that you look at support services at the elementary schools, that's also your workshop night out at New Franklin where they're hoping to do some work with technology and share some of the work going on there as well. January 27th, to look at special education reorganization, job descriptions, and PEEP. February 1, we want to share with you how we're using our federal funds in order to achieve teacher effectiveness, extended learning, and other considerations. And then we know February 7 is the deadline that the early retirement incentive is out there. We'll have some return on that, in which case we can make some adjustments and put our heads together to meet the mandate of the city council. So that's pretty much it. I know Mr. Bartlett has prepared some materials he'll walk you through. I'm happy to answer currently any comments, questions, or concerns you may have, and just remind folks that on Thursday night, we'll be at the high school library where we'll do the first public hearing and the central office reorganization. Sure?
In terms of the building level, the proposed adjustments for building level, the reduce the counselor staffing by one at the high school, can you explain what position that is? Is that --
Well, you know, the way it occurred a year ago is that the middle school eliminated its behavioral interventionist.
Right.
That person then, because of the way their contract works with reduction in force language, really went to bump Shannon Grania, the college counselor. Subsequent to that, in June, we had some ERA funds, and you agreed to support Shannon as well. So the staffing level is higher than is what is needed. There are, I think, and we'll give you this data later on when we look at the counseling piece, but I think there are some nine counselors that exist at Portsmouth High School, and with a recommended ratio of 300 to 1, and nine counselors, there's some flexibility, I think, for the high school principal to make a call and put the resource where it's needed.
So does that mean that we're back to where we were last year in terms of the college counselor?
I will say, I only want to say this this evening, and that is, it's about positions and not people ultimately presenting the budget.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's all I -- we may be back in the same position.
Ann.
I just had a question of the same kind of question. Ed, you said there were nine counselors at the high school.
Yes.
Could you describe the other four?
I will at the workshop session. I don't have that in front of me, Ann, but there are, I believe, four college --
There are five, there are four guidance counselors, one college counselor, and I'm missing four people.
Yeah, I think through our options and the other program. Help me out, it's escaping me.
Okay. All right, so we're counting counselors that are not just --
Counselors who are licensed, right.
Guidance counselors, but they're counselors in the building for other programs.
Right. Go.
I would push then that we would be, if we reduce the counselors, it's going to be the same way as it would be with teachers, which will be last in goes and won't have anything to do with performance or ability or job review or anything like that. It's purely based on when they were hired.
The teacher contract exactly is exclusively based on seniority.
Same thing with counselors.
Absolutely.
Okay, are they in the same contract?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Tom.
You mentioned the $22,000 of health benefit going towards people that are actually retiring. Is that also applied to the people that would be --
No, the reduction in force.
So that's just tied to the reduction in force?
Yes.
That's the equivalent, okay.
At the meeting in the hall in December, the city manager had said for every position that's reduced, you'd get the full value, that 22,800 for FTE.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I have one more question. Eliminate special services director, is that special, the special ed director?
Yes.
Okay. That's the same. Good.
I just would like to add more about that.
Well, that's why I would suspect it would hit, some of these things would kind of catch you very quickly, which is why I'm recommending we workshop each of these and fully vet them.
Yeah, okay, so we'll get more details on the program and how that would play out.
Right. But in short order, what we would do is we would assign the kind of the backstop duties here at central office to the Title I director.
Okay.
We already enjoy between department heads and coordinators, a level of coordination already at buildings. When we went out and visited schools in the cohort group, there were a number that were organized with basically building-level coordinators. So it would be a change in the job description. It would be, you know, it wouldn't be business as usual, but that the principals and the coordinators would work more so at the building level than, there's less hierarchy. We're a little bit flatter organizationally then.
Okay.
But we'll talk about those job descriptions, et cetera, on the 27th, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, I suggested a proposed work schedule there.
Okay, all right.
Leslie.
I just have a comment. I want to just applaud your approach. I mean, it's a breath of fresh air. I think this is my clear budget, my fourth budget process, and you sort of came into it, the middle of it, in your first term when you were hired, but I'm incredibly impressed with you and your administration, how you've structured the discussion and your approach.
Thank you.
And I know we have a lot of work to do.
Sure.
But this is an extraordinary stuff. And I'll hold my congratulations till we sort of get together.
Sure. February 11.
But, well done.
Thank you.
Yes, Kent.
Just a couple of questions, and I guess we're going to be Steve and I think that's where some money may go. Ed, one of the things that catches me is as you were going down there, we all suddenly get to the gap of about $300,000. That's pending that the 22 additional teachers would take that. Is that a correct assumption? I'll make sure that to get to still having 300,000, it would be the buy-in by those teachers that have seniority or would be able to buy the early retirement plan. Is that a correct assumption?
Right. So one of the ways to close that delta, that close to $400,000, is to see what transpires between now and February 7, and who's signing up? And where can we replace it? Where can we perhaps not even fill it? You know, what can we do given the landscape on that date?
Because the oddity that I think we have with that, and I too, I think it's a fair plan. I think it's something that maybe those that are always on the cusp of whether they want to go on or they want to enter into a career or something, you know, that's a great opportunity for them. But is that we get to February 7, and we got 21 that don't take. We then have to find an amazing amount of money within a four-day period because we have to then have it submitted, I believe, by the 14th, I think it is, they're about.
10th, right.
Yeah. Have you got any, so my first question to you in regards to, you know, very reasonable approach in today's economics, have you had any indication or nothing at this point? Because we still are waiting for city council approval, correct?
Right. We are waiting. They won't vote that until that same evening on February 7, which is when they'll take a formal vote on approving it. We went this evening and kind of got their tacit permission.
When will they approve, I'm sorry, didn't hear?
February 7, the same date. And folks know that the opportunity is out there in the hands of teachers.
Okay, so that brings you to the second part. What's the feeling out there there? Is there 21, 22?
I don't think it would be that many. You know, out of the 22 that are out there, I think there are some seven or eight who are on a full family plan, so I don't think they'd be willing, although I can't speak for anyone.
Right, no, no, no.
What would happen? But there have been inquiries at this office to HR, you know, to Stephanie Long, making some inquiry about it. I know a few of the principals have shared with me that there is teacher interest, but I couldn't tell you right now.
And again, it's just the timing of it.
I know, exactly.
It really makes it a difficult work session for us if we get down to that.
Yeah.
And instead of being $300,000 off, which I think you have the PEEP and you have one other program there, I think, you know, that'll take that 300,000 down, maybe 250 or 200 even.
Mm-hmm.
But that could quickly go back up over a half a million if we don't get better than I'm going to, I'm just going to take a ballpark figure here. If we don't get 16 or more, I think we'll probably be looking at a half a million dollars to have to find.
But your point is that if fewer people take it, then we have to find ways to make up that.
Correct. And we only, it's not, I don't care the number of people, because I think it's still a great incentive.
Right.
It's the time period that we'll have to work through.
Right.
And so I think this board has got to be very inquisitive and ready to pull other things. I think we have to have a standby that we have to give to you.
Right.
Because for every teacher that doesn't take that early retirement, we've got to then find X dollars, whatever it may be accounted for.
That's me.
And again, I don't know what the numbers are, would come out with each one. And then a whole lot of other questions after Steve presents, but I do have one other that I'll put out there. Your programming with the Great Bay School, possibly with the automotive, and again, I think this is, you know, we've gone down this road, and unfortunately, we just never had a coordination, whether it be Great Bay or UNH or one of them. And just quick math does this. We have a school building, the high school, and this is just the high school. 365 days, out of 365 days, we use it 185 days, approximately eight hours, which multiplies out to roughly 1,480 hours worth of time. So if you take 16 hours into the day, okay, because realistically, if you go eight to 10 or 11, or seven in the morning to 10 at night, it'd be 16 hours. You know, there's 5,840 hours to utilize. And when we built that high school, one of our things that we wanted to do was first of all, make sure it was usable in the summer and getting, has there been any discussion to better get out there and rattle the cages of these universities and so forth? And they may not be universities, it could be other schools, it could be other programming out there, to really look at, and I know this is a discussion we have to have with city council, but to have positive income come back here. I mean, leased space in this city can be a very valuable tool when the demand is there. And I'm not sure if the demand is there at this time.
Well, we just know through the Business Education Collaborative that Diane Canada runs, and Will Avella, the president of the Great Bay, has, you know, as you're a member, Kent as well, has talked about wanting to come to the high school and find that space for his automotive program. And so we feel this is an opportunity, so they might want to just rent the space. Jeff Collins and Diane Canada did have a conversation, not with Will, but with another person, and they seemed to be a little bit surprised and taking it under consideration. We're scheduled to have a meeting last week, did we get snowed out? So that's out there, but beyond that, in all honesty, nothing about the space usage to colleges or universities.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay, Dexter, you had another comment?
Yeah, so have you sort of put together, besides these strategies, other consideration that you identified, have you put together other, I'm sure the school board will come up with some terrific ideas, but having said that, so have you got, put together sort of a worst-case estimate of if none of the positions that you could live without were affected by the retirement package and you're still needing to get to 400,000, which is the equivalent of about five FTEs? Have you sort of identified sort of how you might go after those in addition to PEEP and getting some funding back for continuous education?
Right. So we've had those conversations a little bit with the administrators. Right. But we were loathe to do that and put that out there initially, but we, you know, we have, you know, a contingency plan, as it were, to go deeper if necessary, absolutely. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Any more questions? Mr. Bartlett.
My question would be short and sweet, I think. In your notebook, what we did was Ed's beginning number, as you saw on there, 38,859,800, that's what this particular run that you have in your notebook represents. It's very similar to what you've had in past years. You have a double-sided, two pages on one top sheet, which is pretty much the summary by cost center, which is very similar to what you've had every year before. Shows you the difference between the two. Below that, each cost center has a page, and I've put, highlighted the salaries and the FTE sections, the benefit sections, and then below that, you have the operating sections, just as if you've had in the past. I've just tried to trim it down to make it a little more compact, knowing full well that we had so far to go, that this is really just a starting point. So it's almost, I almost hesitate to even print it, but I know it gives you an opportunity to go down and look at some of the, you know, to go down and look at some of the, you know, where, what these numbers are made of, um, and, and where we could go, um, and to keep track of the changes that we make. Basically, we put it together, um, by collecting the data from the, um, principals and department heads, and making a few adjustments, um, that we knew would have to be made, but the rest is, um, other than the, um, the COLA adjustments, the health insurance adjustments, the retirement adjustments, um, the operating sections are by and large just level-funded from previous year's budgets. They haven't been, some of them have not been adjusted by actual at this point in time. So, excuse me, in summary, it's just a, it's a starting point, which'll, you know, give us a basis for discussion and, and help you, help you see where the changes can be made that Ed had outlined in, in the PowerPoint presentation.
So, I have one quick question.
Sure.
So as you're, as we're looking at this budget, um, the left-hand side of the page is last year, or this current year's 36.9.
Yes.
The right-hand side of the page is the proposed budget of 38.8, where we still need to find the 1.9 to come out of it.
Correct. So it has not been adjusted by?
Okay.
Any of, the only real adjustment on here was that, at the meeting of the whole, the city managers had prepared a reduction in the health insurance rate, and so that is reflected in here. But that was because it was done at the very beginning of the process. Everything else is pretty much just taking, if we did this year's budget and moved it to next year with COLAs and things that we knew, um, as our starting point, and that's, that's all it is.
The, uh, the health plan changes, knowing full well that the, the APT has the ability to, you know, make those changes, or they can decide not to make those changes. We talked about about $289,000 two meetings ago, about changing the actual plan. And I don't know if that's also a part of the consideration.
Well, it's.
Or if there's a, if, if there's just a, you know, a notation to say that, you know, we'll know at a certain point when, whether that's an option.
Unfortunately, with that, the open enrollment period is at the end of the year, so we would have to, um, any adjustments we make in that would have to be based on teachers coming forward and, and signaling to us, yes, I plan on changing in July.
Okay. I wasn't sure when they open enrollment, and when those numbers would actually impact this budget.
So, I mean, there, there could be potential impact, and, and, you know, as, as we go through this, we'll try to get some, you know, some information from anybody who is interested.
So there's, there's some goodness there, but it's, you know.
It's not identified, it's not identified in the PowerPoint.
Not identifiable, no.
It's not identified in, in the PowerPoint or the plan at this stage of the game.
Right. Okay.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
I'll go back to Ed, and, and part of his presentation, and, you know, just getting our first glance at the budget tonight. And, and I see, and I, I hear the, in the first part of decline of enrollment, you brought up the kindergarten and so forth. We had this shoot-up of kindergarten. One of it was probably the, the factor that we went to full-time kindergarten. Is, is, is that a factor that now, um, is it less likely to have students that go, as we've had some that could go a half-day and opt out? Does that factor have any part to do with it, the part-time? I guess I call them part-time kindergartners.
The data suggests that there's been a, this, this year, based on births, and typically for every 100 births in the city, you, you have 70 students on average, a 10-year K, programming. Based on that, we've seen a decline, a slight decline in births would suggest this slight decline here. What I want to make clear to the board, though, is our K-5 enrollment will be at the exact same number as it is this year, as it is next year.
Okay, that's right.
The K's, the K's are going to be lower, but we got that bubble we're managing through.
Right.
And, um, so over time, we'll see a, a reduction at the elementary schools, but not next year. It's the exact, almost the exact same number.
And at the end of three years, there's no guarantee that there's not a new nether bubble that could appear, and then you, you start that cycle over. I mean, and, and, and this is, I think, what ironically we have to make sure the public knows, is that, you know, we can adjust teachers, we can take them on out, but guess what? There is a saturation point where we need to put a teacher back in. And, and that sounds like all of this, as you said, is that decline that shows to some degree. I mean, we can't guarantee a new housing development doesn't pop up over in Greenland that, that could drastically increase that all of a sudden. Um, I think we had a high rise when we finished the high school. We, we were able to bring in new students because of the newness and, and things were there, and people were giving it a try. I think, uh, private schools have now taken back over a little bit of that hand. But again, this, this population are dropping 100, or in the high school, it looked like 17-odd students or 20 students just running off. There, there's not a guarantee, and.
No.
Those people, or those students can all show up all in one class, and then we're, we're nailed for that subject line.
And, and the other thing the NSDAQ data suggests is you have in-migration still going on, particularly at the higher levels. So you have folks coming here and enrolling their children, middle school, high school, et cetera. And last year, we really enjoyed a number of students coming out of SAU 50 who opted not to go, we saw our highest number coming over to the high school last year in the ninth grade.
Now, my follow-up towards this, and the reason I ask this question about trying to pinpoint a population, which is impossible, I mean, there are ways to view it, but no way to pinpoint it, is what kind of catches my ear and eyes, and we're taking away, and I think the redevelopment of special ed, as you're looking at it and going to present to us, is, is a good approach. But what doesn't happen, even if we do decline, is that the percentage of children that need special educational help, some of them coded, some of them not coded, but there, it seems to always be slightly increasing. You know, if we're at 12% right now of the student population needing, and I don't know what the, it is, but we'll obviously say 12% that need special help under education. That 12% doesn't go down when we lessen, uh, the enrollment of the students. In fact, if I kind of see it, it tends to keep climbing up, because those students that need the most help stay with public education instead of going to private education quite often. Is that a correct assumption?
What, what I think we're seeing, and Steve, you can join in, I mean, I think we're seeing that some of the efforts that the district has taken with early education, early intervention, has yielded less students identified at the elementary schools. And so over time, we may see a lessening of that, but you're right, the percentage of students is about 14%. The, I think Paula shared the data with you a month, last month, or was it the last business meeting?
Last meeting.
About 150, 150 or so with the high school, about 95 to 100 at the middle school, and about 30 to 35 at each of our schools, population notwithstanding. It's about 30 to 35. So again, about 90, and then there are 30 children involved in the PEEP program. So that's our total, about, just around 400.
Which is a fair percentage.
About 14%.
And, and those students come in, whatever the average daily cost is for, for education in Portsmouth School District, those students rise that cost up, no fault of their own, but it is, it is a, a point that we have to always take into consideration.
Absolutely.
Along with that, where we used to get federal dollars and other monies, that number has drastically dropped in the last seven years, if you look at it. So, we still, we have the obligation, both by federal mandates and state mandates, and some of our own mandates under the Portsmouth system, that we will make sure every child is given the best opportunity of education. So that number, that cost factor, never goes down at all. I mean, in fact, our cost per student on special ed, as long as the government keeps cutting and does not come up with any more programming, will go up. Is that correct? That cost?
Is that correct, Mr. Zadri? I think it, I, I.
There's no new money to be found.
No, there's no new money. Absolutely not. In fact, we're losing the America's Recovery and Reinvestment Act dollars that came to us in Title I, and came to us under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Both those pots of monies, two-year kind of stimulus funds are going away in FY12.
Okay. Then my last request and suggestion towards this, and I know I just briefly said something to Dexter when we were leaving the other day. Extracurricular activities. My children have had a great opportunity in the Portsmouth School System. I never want to see it go. I'm not a fan, nor do I favor play-to-pay. I think, you know, studies show that districts have put it in, districts have taken it out, uh, and, and it, it comes with its own set of luggage. Um, and, but what I do think has to be done, and, and again, I ask this from K through 12, is to take out the high and the low, and, and average out what extracurricular costs us on a per-student basis. Now, some students will play, and again, we always think of extracurricular activity as, as, as sports, but it's not. It's band, it's drama, it's the clubs and so forth. So what I would like to see is what the average is, taking out the high and the low on that, K through 12. See if we can't be creative as, as things come along, and, and say, as long as you want X sport or X type of activity in there. And, and again, I think the lower-cost items are not, are never going to be affected. It's going to hit the higher-cost items. And, uh, you know, that's probably not a fair drain on, on the overall educational budget when you look at the higher-cost items. How can we be more creative, uh, and put more ownership of, of those higher-priced items out there? And again, I just would ask that. And I don't know if it's possible, I would hope it is, that you have the numbers for the extracurricular activities. I mean, I look here, I look at the middle school.
Yep.
And I, I see certain activities there. And that's really the only way you're going to get a fair picture, is the number of students in each activity, what that cost factor is per student. And again, I am not, um, suggesting we eliminate extracurricular activities. I'm saying we have to look at it differently and, and say, if it's going to survive, it may not be able to survive solely on, on the school budget or the taxpayer's dollar.
We have that data. You might remember Russ shared it, as did Steve Cirillo a year ago. He presented it, updated it, so we can, we can.
Yeah, and that was Russ's data.
That's right.
But I'm saying I want the whole gamut of music.
Oh, beyond, oh, absolutely. I can, absolutely.
I mean, I, I even see Safety Patrol in there, and I, I'm not saying eliminating Safety Patrol, but, you know, is it six kids, and, and how do we do that? And, and there's a cost factor to that.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Um, I had a comment about something Kent was saying, and also a couple of questions regarding the children who have learning disabilities. What I'm hearing from people is that it's not necessarily that there are more kids with learning disabilities, it's that the kids with disabilities are more severe than they used to be. And that's what I'm hearing. So I don't know if there's a way to capture that.
I think that's a key driver. I think that's a piece of that as well.
And then the other, I, okay, I have a couple of questions, and if, my question is not, if this isn't the appropriate time, just tell me when to bring it up.
Sure.
And I'll bring it up then.
Fine.
Um, in terms of the Career Tech Program, um, I like some of the things I see here that you're doing, but I think we can look closer at that program, and I think, sort of along the lines of what Kent, Kent was saying about, you know, looking at all the extracurricular, looking at everything, not necessarily meaning that we are going to cut it, but looking at it and what it costs, um, I think at some point, we really need to analyze things like offering classes like architecture at a public high school, whether that's necessary in the core, or if that's outside the core. Um, and in terms of the core, I think we should define that for the public, what that means. And I think we, as a board, have to come together and understand what we mean by that. So, um, you know, I just would really like for us to take a very close look at classes like architecture, um, history of sports, um, botany, um, all the classes that, um, to me anyway, don't seem to be necessary, um, and what we could do there, and also, um, looking again at culinary, if there's any way that they can generate income. And the same with automotive. If there's anything that they can do to bring in income and still do a good job teaching kids, maybe even do a better job. And then the other question I had was coaches. You talked about coaches?
Yes.
Was that at the middle school?
The instructional coaches?
Yeah.
It, um, those were K-5.
Okay.
Literacy and math, and we really had a conversation, we would love to, with the John's Initiative, to get, uh, kind of scale up the math program and sequence a coach there as well, but we just can't afford to.
Okay. What, explain to me what a coach is.
Well, so, so it's professional.
As opposed to a teacher.
Yeah. It's professional development in a different way. You know, there are a lot of demands on teachers, and one of the things we ask them to do is to be looking at student data, and we look at them to be developing regular formative assessments. So this coach helps organize the data, so when they come to their meetings, they're not starting from scratch. They're facilitating those kinds of conversations that our professional learning community teams are doing. They're also going in and helping teachers with their practice. So it's another, it's a different way of thinking about professional development. It's happening in the classrooms in, in real time, is how, how we would look at professional development.
Does, is a coach paid more?
Steve, I don't want you to add anything, because.
More or less than a teacher?
Uh, there, you know, one strategy might be if somebody retired, you could bring someone back. Robin Verdic, as you may know, has been very helpful in the lesson study that's gone on, as well as Susan Dees.
Right.
But we're talking about institutionalizing this and getting, they provide us some time, but not full-time.
Okay.
And so, you know, a real, I think a real commitment to teacher skill and practice is critical, if we're going to get better. If, if we just go retreat to our classrooms and do what we've always do, we're going to do what we've always done. But we, if we're talking about, you know, using data to inform instruction, to know how to differentiate instruction, to know how to work with children, somebody has to be the expert to support teachers in that work. So that's what coaches do. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and I would just, um, aside from the point, Mr. McDonough made, which would be around the, um, that we have used coaches in the past, that we've, that's been part of the strategy, that was part of our strategy in using the ERA funds, knowing that they were going to be going away, is using some professional position to build capacity in existing staff. Even going back a number of years, when the elementary schools had started with, with the LRR literacy model, um, we invested in coaches to help build capacity at the elementary classrooms, and that, um, you know, that, but those positions, which, which really have sort of always been kind of a hybrid of a coach and, and a, and a reading specialist or something like that, have, have evolved over the years based on the need of the staff for that professional development. And so, as, as Ed said, we're, we'd be looking to institutionalize and build something more sustainable with those positions.
So if I could just jump in for one, so it's clearer for, for myself. So these coaches really are a strategy towards improving the capacity and teacher effectiveness. They're not coaches that actually necessarily work with students, that's just working with the teachers.
Right.
And we're, we're suggesting we rethink how we're using federal monies. We're talking about DINI funds and our Title II monies.
Okay.
Not general fund monies.
And the longer school day, um, is that something that you had to negotiate with the union about, or?
Well, you know, we, we had informal conversations with the leadership of the union. You know, teachers work an eight-hour day. I think there's been some agreement as to what the instructional day looks like, and they were more than willing to see us, you know, push, push that on the edges. And, and while the elementary schools were still having a conversation about it, some of this is, is maximizing the time you currently have.
Uh-huh.
And, and in some other instances, um, you know, how do we extend the day?
Yeah.
In the middle school, John wants to, you know, go with a longer core instructional block than he currently offers at the middle school.
Thank you.
There you go.
Does that impact something?
Yeah, you know, we...
[laughing].
We're out to bid with a new contract, so we want to get our Times Square and then put it in the hands of the contract and say, okay, here you go. Tell us, tell us how to get it done.
Okay.
You know? So that's what we're...
Are there any grants, grant requests that may be out there in particular areas that might, might help us along in some manner? And can you just, I mean, we talked in the past of maybe having a grant writer, either part-time or full-time, but I never quite understood the grant process. You know, we had a huge technology grant at the middle school last year that saved us significant money and allowed us to do something that could be done. Is there anything in the queue?
Yeah, we've got...
Talk to the grant writer. [laughing]. Bid him, maybe half.
This year, speaking of the coaching piece, this year we had, we had received last year a grant of $75,000, which was a part of a math-science partnership grant, which was a competitive grant in the state, which had to do with building a relationship with a higher ed organization and focusing in on math or science. And that's really where we chose to focus on our lesson study work, which is teachers collaboratively planning lessons and observing each other. That's being facilitated, as Ed said, by Robin Burdick and Susan Deese primarily. We're working with WestEd on that and UNH. So those grants come along, you know, every couple of years from the state, and we try to take advantage of those whenever they come about. And that one has really helped us this year in the area of math at the elementary school. We also are pursuing, right now, in hopes to secure a grant, and we'll apply next month for a grant that's called 21st Century Communities. And that's a grant that would support after-school programming. And as we talk about extending the day, extending learning opportunities for kids, we'd see this grant as a potential strategic resource to help get that off the ground. The key requirement with that is it can only be used in a school that has over 30% free and reduced eligibility, so it would be restricted to either New Franklin or the middle school in this go-around. So we're looking, we're exploring that, you know, which of those kinds of programs we'd want to put into place and how we'd get that off the ground. We've met with John Stokel and George Shada to look at that and look at that grant proposal. And that's, you know, over $100,000 a year for five years. So we're trying to find those kinds of opportunities that would fit well with the kind of strategic work that we're doing. And as they come along, you know, we look to take full advantage of them.
Thank you, Mitch. Sorry. You're supposed to be kidding me.
I guess I will. I really will. Just a little tap isn't enough. Okay. I too am very impressed with what's been laid out in front of us, in view of the reallocating of the resources, which is something we've been talking about for quite a bit, and the aspect of the length of the day, the literacy block, the math block, intervention blocks, and all of that. And I do think that will have a really big effect on the LD population and the non-LD population as well. So every bit of that at each elementary level, middle school, and high school as well. I'm very impressed with that, so.
I just have a couple of quick questions. So the issue of the coaches, again, you were suggesting that the money for the coaches would not come out of the general fund, but it would be out of the federal grants and maybe Title II. Okay. You know, I think the idea of a grant writer would be great. I don't know how we could afford one if you could guarantee that a person could raise enough money to pay their salary, you know? But I think there's two parts to that. One is a grant writer, and the other is somebody who's, you know, maybe you could even outsource this, somebody who could actually spend some time out there looking to see what kinds of possible sources exist for funds, like foundation. I mean, this is what my wife does at UNH. You know, you go around, you look, and you see what kind of money's available. You know, short of being the grant writer, somebody to help identify potential sources for grants. But again, I don't know how we would pay for that this year either, you know? But I do think for a longer-term strategy, I mean, we're a small district. Big districts probably have this kind of money and people who would do that. But, I mean, it could be very helpful. It's just hard to know how we'd actually go about making it happen. Yeah?
I think what Mitch did, the city council volunteered that we could find a way to get rid of...
They did.
They did.
They said, you know, anytime we could come up with something, so if we can...
Pull out that tape.
Yeah. I mean, seriously, I mean, if grant writing has a probability of paying for itself and you need to initiate it...
Right.
Then it's rather silly not to, you know, lay it back to them and say, look, for, you know, $52,000 this year, we need a grant writer, but next year we'll offset it with the grants that come in, or however.
See how that...
I know that works, but throw it back on their lap.
Ann, did you have something?
Well, probably as part of that, I think that we've mentioned this before, we've had a grant writer in SAU 50 in the past, but part of that problem is eligibility. And frequently, those grants are not eligible to districts such as ours.
Right.
And so, and just as Steve just said, that only two of our schools here would be even eligible, because you have to have that 30% free and reduced lunch. Well, we had a discussion between SAU 50 and SAU 52 one year at the curriculum council, and we were all talking about a big grant that was, and we said, why are you nuts? We don't, we don't meet that criteria, and we're not even going to close. So that's, and frequently that money is specifically put out there for big districts that have a economic, right, economic problems and...
Just to kind of, you know, going through, like, you know, from a gut standpoint, I feel like we've gotten a lot of stuff and had the opportunity to really, the opportunity to really, you know, fine-tune a lot of things, and we're starting to see some things come together. And I know a lot of the times we're focused on, you know, where can we trim here and where can we do this? And we're talking about protecting a lot of stuff. But, you know, are there some areas that the board should understand or know that are areas that if we had money, you know, we would like to put more money here? You know, are there areas that suddenly, you know, the administration is looking at that says, you know, we're focused on annual yearly progress, and we're focused on trying to bring, you know, people, you know, special ed, we're trying to raise all boats, but knowing that there are also those kids that are doing well, who aren't necessarily being challenged, because a lot of the focus is on the people that need to perform better. So are there areas that, you know, if we did have the money, or in this, you know, day and age where, you know, so much of our focus is on, you know, cuts, but yet protecting the core? And I feel like, you know, we're doing, and you've presented something that I think, you know, amazingly so, is, you know, coming close to fill the bill. You know, what are we missing? You know, what are the pieces that we could be focusing on, or people watching tonight would be sitting there saying, ah, you know, I really would love that program to be enhanced. You know, my student is an AP student and is not being challenged, you know?
Right, so we thought, February, when we talked about those key strategies and how we're going about, one of the things we talked a lot about is at the elementary school level, K-5, is to, you know, not only the intervention after-school block, but what kind of enrichment opportunities can be provided out, you know, our best and brightest students to take advantage of that after-school programming as well. So we're still in conversations about how to do that in a revenue-neutral way, as it were, and what modest monies are available. I have to give a lot of, I gotta think, think about that.
Yeah, I know, it's just, it's a broad...
I've spent the last couple of weeks taking things off the table.
I know, I know.
You're asking me to pull things back on, so...
Yeah.
Switch.
Yes, Carol.
I think Tom's point is a really good one, and, you know, because maybe there could be a family in Portsmouth, a well-to-be-family family, that might say, we saw that in the paper. This school really could use X, Y, or Z.
You know, it's, it's...
You never know.
It's awesome you mention that, because actually Kate Callahan has spoken with somebody, a benefactor, who wants to see, who wants to support us in offering a more robust summer school program. And has actually offered to pay for the buses. And so one of the struggles we've had in thinking about this is that the Jump Start was run at each of the schools. And to some degree, that, people are used to their neighborhood schools, and that's where they go. We're trying to think, can we find a singular location and run it and do it efficiently? And would people come, or would they not? So that's still an open-ended piece that we're having conversations about. So there are folks like that, actually.
I mean, it's almost a wish list of sorts, but just knowing that, you know, these are areas that, aside from wanting to hire better teachers and improve them through PLCs, but it becomes more about, you know, programmatically to say, you know, these are things that we want to improve here in the district.
Yeah.
Couldn't this be done at the new middle school? When we're finished with that, would that be an ideal location for a summer program in the heat of summer, because it's air-conditioned? And, and, is it? And all of the, all of the...
We're waiting bids, I think, on that.
All of the students together, and transportation, we could take care of, too.
Is it air-conditioned?
Not yet.
Not yet.
You haven't broken ground yet.
I'm pushing.
It's in construction, Doc.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
You know, Tom, I'm going to make, you know, to follow up, and I don't know when we have this air on Channel 22. I do know that, you know, the media here tonight, that, you know, I know there's this high discussion of study circles out there to, you know, have its going-ons as a budgets. We're in the budget, you know? I think that's one of the downsides, is that study circles are going to be coming in after us. But this is the most golden, because we are a study circle. We're an elected study circle, we'll make sure that we represent everybody. And I was the one who came up first with it, for making sure that we have two public hearings, because it does us no good to get a public hearing on one of the very last nights. The most important public hearing, which is the least attended, is the one that comes up this coming Thursday. I mean, I'll stress to the press that, you know, I encourage groups like Wave and those who want to participate in the study circles, because this is their opportunity to lay it back on to us and ask, so that we can ask the right questions over the next, we only have 16 days with this budget, basically, when you look at the time schedule, taking out the weekends. We, you know, we really need the public input of what they think or what they may know that helps us create a budget. So again, I'll appeal to the media to make sure that Thursday night, it's the one night I don't think it's supposed to snow.
At the high school.
At the high school, we make sure, you know, that they fill it up. Don't wait to the second one. The second one's an important one. But the first one allows us to cultivate ideas in our heads in discussion.
Thank you, Ann. Because I do think, you know, just to be clear, we had asked for these, some of these meetings to be in city chambers on television, particularly even tonight's opening up of the budget and the first public hearing, but we were not able to get in. So it kind of makes it a little awkward. But I think your point is well-taken, that, you know, we do want as many people as possible to come to the public hearing and let us know what they think about the budget. Particularly, I'd love to hear more from parents who have kids in the schools. Yep. As to how they can, their suggestions as how we can get to zero. So we'll see if people show up. Okay? Anything else? So the upcoming meetings, just to be clear again, we have the first public hearing and another workshop coming up on Thursday evening, the 20th, at the high school. We have our regular school board meeting, which will be at New Franklin on January 25th. We have another work, budget work session, January 27th. So it's pretty much every Tuesday and Thursday between now and February 10th. Right, so most of them will be at City Hall, except for these first three, who are able to get in, starting on 27th, so.
And then the 27th, is that City Hall?
That's City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
27th, City Hall, February 1st, City Hall, February 8th, which is the second hearing, City Hall, and February 10th, City Hall. Yeah.
That's the end.
And that's the end. Okay? Okay. Any other questions on tonight? Okay? So done?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.